Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Tuesday, August 29th, 2023, meeting of the Pierce County Council. The time is 3:01 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Krueger.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Excused.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Here.
Councilmember Morell.
Here.
And Councilmember Mello.
Here.
There's six members present, Mr. Chair.
There's six members present, Anna Quorum of the council. Item number three is our Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag and our Land Acknowledgement. Our moment of silence today is dedicated to the victims of the racially motivated attack at the Dollar General store in Jacksonville, Florida, this Saturday that killed three individuals. Their names were Angela Michelle Carr, Anno Joseph A.J. Leguerre Jr., and Gerald Galian. I'd ask you to please join us in the land acknowledgement and pledge of allegiance to the flag led by Councilmember Hitchens, followed by a moment of silence dedicated to the three lives lost to gun violence in Jacksonville, Florida this past Saturday. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional homelands of the Coast Salish tribes. Coast Salish people have lived on and stewarded these lands since time immemorial and continue to do so today. We recognize that this land acknowledgement is just one small step towards true allyship, and we commit to uplifting the voices, experiences, and histories of the indigenous people of this land. I'd like to now invite all that can stand to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is in the back. And remember, we're pausing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now at section four, approval of our agenda. Are there any objections to approving today's agenda as presented? Seeing no objection, the agenda is approved. On today's council agenda, there will be multiple opportunities for public comment. On the consent agenda, you may provide comment on any final action. This does not include items placed on the consent agenda for introduction and scheduling. Today's consent agenda has four appointments for final hearing. Some of them are here, and I suspect there'll be a motion to move those to another part of our agenda. And during sections eight and nine of the agenda, we'll take public comment on each ordinance and resolution individually. Finally, under community forum, there will be an opportunity to address the council on any topic that is not on today's agenda. Oyster Campbell, for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to amend the consent agenda, moving items C to A, section C to C, and C to D, those are three appointments, to section nine of the agenda and adopt the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt the consent agenda with the exceptions of moving the three separate appointments to the regular meeting agenda under resolution section nine. Does any member wish to remove any other item from the consent agenda? Does any member wish to remove any other item from the consent agenda? Not seeing any. The vote is on the adoption of the consent agenda with the exception of C to A, C to C, and C to D. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson, excuse me, Denson is excused. Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the consent agenda is adopted. That brings us to section six of the agenda, messages from the executive prosecuting attorney and our judges. We have two today. A message from the executive transmitting the following coordinates, which was approved and signed on August 28th, 2023. The first was ordinance number 2023-27, which was an ordinance of the Pierce County Council related to wage adjustments for nonrepresented employees in the Department of Assigned Counsel. And the second is ordinance number 2023-31, which was an ordinance of the Pierce County Council authorizing the approval of several applications of property for open space classification under the current use assessment. Those were the two ordinances that were signed into law by the executive. That now brings us to section seven, proclamations, recognitions, and awards. We have one proclamation today, a proclamation of the Pierce County Council proclaiming the month of September 23rd as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Pierce County. And I'd like to call on Kelly Sweeney-Widman and family and Thelma Brown to please come to the podium. And I'd like to call on Councilmember Hitchens to read this into the record. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. A proclamation of the Pierce County Council proclaiming the month of September 2023 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Pierce County, Washington. Whereas suicide is a serious public health problem that has long-lasting effects on individuals, families, and communities. And whereas suicide is a public health problem that is preventable through the implementation of strategies at all levels of society. These strategies include strengthening economic supports, creating protective environments, improving the access and delivery of suicide care, promoting healthy connections, teaching coping and problem-solving skills, and identifying supporting people at risk, including learning the warning signs and committing to social change. And whereas creating social change starts with the erosion of stigmas about seeking mental health treatment and the removal of barriers to accessing community resources, which is exceedingly important when suicide being the main leading cause of death for people aged 10 to 34 years old nationally and has recorded 48,183 deaths by suicide or one suicide every 11 minutes in the United States every year. And whereas in Pierce County, 23% of 10th graders reported they considered attempting suicide and 10% had attempted suicide in the past year when surveyed in the 2021 Healthy Youth Survey for Pierce County. And whereas anyone can be at risk for suicide with populations such as the LGBTQ+, veterans, and tribal populations experiencing factors linked to suicide disproportionately. And whereas Veterans Affairs reported veteran suicide rates increased 55% from 2001 to 2019, and veterans are one and a half times more likely to die by suicide than those who have not served, depriving family, friends, and community members of the countless years of love and memories with those who have honorably served our nation. And whereas the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline implemented the 988 dialing code system in July of 2022 to provide direct lifesaving services to all in need, simply call or text 988 if you or a loved one is experiencing a mental health or suicide-related crisis. And whereas suicide is preventable through resources available, including but not limited to the National Alliance of Mental Illness, Pierce County Crisis Line at 1-800-576-7764, Crisis Connections Clinic at 1-866-427-4747, the Veterans Crisis Line at 1-800-273-8255, the Washington Recovery Help Line at 1-866-789-1511, and the Teen Link at 1-866-833-6546. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed on this 29th day of August 2023 by the Pierce County Council that September 2020, we missed the typo, 2022 is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Pierce County, Washington, and residents, government agencies, public and private schools, private businesses, and nonprofit organizations and community groups are encouraged to take action to strengthen the mental health of our communities in Pierce County adopted this day. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. It's a really serious moment, but an important moment that we pause and recognize this day and what we can learn from it and how we can better support folks in our communities. So I'd like to turn it over to our guests for some remarks.
And Reese's brother, Rob, is in the audience as well, and his wife, Madison. First, I'd like to thank you so much for presenting the Suicide Prevention Proclamation in honor of our son and brother Reese Widman. Reese was only 17 when he took his own life. He was a senior at Silicon High School and an all-around wonderful person. He loved to make people laugh. He lit up a room with laughter, his beautiful smile, or a mischievous smirk. He would dance spontaneously and truly brought joy to all around him. We have heard countless stories of how Reese was a good person and looked out for other people. Reese was a talented baseball player, too. He had so much fun and truly shined on the field. He had such confidence about him when he stepped on the mound to pitch. He made so many friends through sports and school. He loves his friends so much. He loved to golf, play poker, go to school sporting events, mountain bike, just hang out with his friends. He just had a great time with them. He had a special relationship with all of his family members, too. He is such an entertainer at our family gatherings. He would make people laugh and engage with each person. We all miss and love him beyond measure. Reese was diagnosed with epilepsy in February of 2020, I'm sorry, 2020. He was prescribed Depakote to prevent seizures. Most of the anti-epilepsy medications have a side effect of depression, hopelessness, suicidal ideations, and abnormal thoughts. He had to switch to a different medication, which also had the same side effects. And that switch happened in 2021, in the beginning of the year. In the summer and fall of 2022, we noticed that Reese became a little more moody, but we wrote it off to him being a normal teenager. Later in the fall, he became more withdrawn from us at home, but normal interactions with his friends. He was having some struggles but didn't want to openly discuss them. Our world was turned upside down at 1:14 AM on January 7th of this year. Reese's friends, family, and our whole community have been overwhelmed with the worst grief you can imagine. Nobody saw this coming. In one of Reese's notes, he said, "Do what I couldn't do. Get help." Since we lost Reese, we have a mission. We are Reese's voice. We will raise awareness, erase the stigma, and normalize the discussion of mental health struggles and suicide. We will bring light to this darkness. We started a nonprofit organization called Witty's Work and already have hosted a race and a baseball tournament to raise awareness and talk to youth and different community members about our cause. We look forward to collaborating with the people from the Department of Health and the Washington State Healthcare Authority, as well to work on some programs with them, and excited to get that started. We must make improvements. One thing that we've been thinking about is how do we implement a peer-to-peer education, a curriculum, at the school, in the high schools? And that's something that the Department of Health is already working on, and we're excited to get started working with them as well. Medical office appointments, as far as like the pediatrician and specialty clinics, we noticed that it's not always standard that people are screened for depression and suicide risk, especially with specialty clinic with these medications causing side effects that would affect people's mental well-being. So we really want to encourage that change in our doctors' offices. As Councilmember Hitchens said, these statistics are staggering. So just to normalize that discussion by having that screening happening in medical offices would be imperative. We appreciate the work of Pierce County in the efforts to reduce the number of suicides, and we are so thankful that you welcomed us today to receive this proclamation in honor of our son. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, county council members and guests. My name is Thelma Brown, and I am the president of the Gigg Harbor Key Peninsula Suicide Prevention Coalition. It is an honor to be here today to address one of the most important causes our nation faces, saving lives through suicide prevention. Suicide is the number-one cause of death in teens. Over 5,000 veterans die by suicide each year. Suicide prevention requires our unwavering attention, compassion, and action. Each and every one of us has the power to make a difference in people's lives, to be that light that brings them hope. I, too, would like to acknowledge the continued resilience, the love, and strength that the Widman family exhibits for their son Reese, who has left us too soon. Your lives are valuable, and you are not alone in your moments of despair and struggles. The Gigg Harbor Key Peninsula Suicide Prevention Coalition worked with the Transportation Department to get the "There is Hope" signs on the Narrows Bridge, which has resulted in saving two lives so far. One of our main goals for this year is to have our students trained to become youth mental health first-aiders, to help break down the stigma that surrounds mental health, and to open our hearts and ears to those who need it most. On behalf of our coalition, I would like to thank the council for your generous donation, which will help us with our goal in saving lives. As we work together to prevent suicide, be the friend who listens without judgment. Befriend our veterans and talk with them if the occasion arises. Be kind and caring. These acts can make a difference. Last but not least, remember to take care of yourselves. Together, we can create communities where everyone knows they are valued and where hope prevails over despair and depression. Thank you.
Thank you, Thelma. Thank you for being with us. Thank you to the Widman family for telling your story and sharing about Reese and wish we could have met him. But your grief, turning your grief into action and awareness is very inspiring. Let me open it up to other members of the council for final remarks about this proclamation. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you all for being here today. And using pain to amplify a message, to try and reduce pain for others, is powerful and it's important. I wish you didn't have this task under your belt here, but I appreciate the work you're doing locally and taking it and turning it into energy. The mental health first aid that the Pierce County Health Department is Pierce County, Tacoma Pierce County Health Department provides has been doing some really phenomenal things. I'm very excited that we've got multiple school districts that are being added. Having kids tell other kids it's okay is so much more powerful, sadly, than us as parents sometimes, or even their teachers, when it's their friend that's saying, "Hey, could you call this number?" Or, "Hey, it sounds like you're in crisis. Should we do something?" Is going to resonate with the teen boy that's hanging out on the basketball court or the girls that are hanging out somewhere at school way more than five hours later when they get home and they've had time to dwell on something, and then parents come home. And so I think getting that training into the hands of youth who can do that work, but also helping them understand what to look for in themselves so that they know to ask for help and they know how to handle that, I think, is incredibly powerful. So I really appreciate the work that you're doing and your ask around having depression screening in just any appointments. It's a very simple screening, and I know a lot of our clinics and our healthcare providers are asking for that. It's just one of those, how do we make it everywhere, every appointment, just a quick check-in to make sure that's happening? Because you don't know what's going on inside. You can tell when, I think I said this last year, you can tell when someone's bleeding. You've noticed that. You've responded to that. But when mental health pain is going on, you can't see that. And so this is a way those screenings could really help. So appreciate your work, and please keep us in the loop, at least my office, as you move forward with other activities. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. Other remarks by councilmembers? Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens, for highlighting this. The Whitmans, I feel your pain. I feel your pain. And you're so brave, and like Councilmember Hitchens saying, you're taking that pain and putting this energy forward for everybody else. Also, in the proclamation, there was many different avenues of help because one thing might not be good for one person. You know, I know personally talking to veterans, many veterans, they're not going to talk to their battle buddies that they were in combat for because, you know, they don't want to look weak in front of their buddies if they, you know, things like that. So maybe a number, somebody that's outside that circle that could help them. Students that know the signs may be better than, you know, we've all, some of us have had kids that sometimes were the last people to know, were the last people that they want to talk to sometimes, and just those different avenues. Because we've come a long way, and there's a lot more to go. Because years ago, there was such a stigma on it that if this happened in a family, people were quiet about it, never mentioned it again. But I appreciate you coming out, I mean, January, and you're here, you know? And I commend your bravery, and we're going to continue to work on this and make things better. So thank you for being here. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. Other final remarks. I want to recognize some other guests that made their way all the way here to help commemorate the special day of Suicide Awareness Day in Pierce County. I want to recognize Lovey Offerley, the interim president of the National Alliance of Mental Illness here in Pierce County. Lovey, thank you for being here. Liz Grasher, councilmember from the town of Silicon, came especially for this. And also Peter Romale, Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland's office also came to be present for this recognition. Thank you for joining the Widman family. And Thelma from Suicide Awareness Coalition. Again, you telling your story is just very inspiring. It's got to be so hard to do so many times. But your commitment to making sure that there are resources for others is just a bright light. Just last week, this council appropriated close to $30 million to behavioral health treatments. And in that $30 million, about 1.1 million is dedicated just to teen mental health first aid. And that teen mental health first aid is going to be delivered in at least 12 of the 15 school districts throughout Pierce County. So it's because of your hard work, your awareness, to make sure that bodies like this are continuing to prioritize behavioral health treatment is why we do it. So it's, please keep up the work, keep up the advocacy in shining a bright light on this really important need in our community. With that, I'd like to invite our guests to come on up here if you can be willing to take a picture with us so we can commemorate the moment and help get the word out about more resources to more people. You can come all the way onstage if you're willing. Thank you again to our many guests who are here. And we're going to use those photos in that moment to make sure that many, many more families know about the resources that are available to them. Thank you. We're at section, we're moving to section nine because there are no ordinances on our agenda today. So we are at resolutions. And we're going to go back to some of the appointments that we postponed because those individuals are with us. We'll just take them in order so that we don't lose sight of any of them. Councilmember Krueger, for a motion on 2023-129, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move R. 2023-129.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt proposal R. 2023-129. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title to the record?
Proposal number R. 2023-129, a resolution of the Pierce County Council confirming the appointment of one new member, Dean Absher, to the Frederickson Advisory Commission.
Thank you. Dean, thank you for being with us virtually in our Zoom room. Thank you for your willingness to serve on the Frederickson Advisory Commission. Dean, we'd invite you to introduce yourself briefly and share briefly why you wish to serve.
Thank you, council. Yes, I was, had been on the advisory before and would like to continue to serve, and I thank you for your support for that in trying to make not just Frederickson but all of Pierce County a better place to live and work. And would like to continue, I, with one of the reasons I would like to serve, I'm a longtime resident and plan on continuing to be a longtime resident, and would like to help direct the continued growth and improvement in the area for everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Are there any questions or comments of Dean before we open this up for a public hearing? Not seeing any. This is a public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to provide comments on this proposal? Not seeing anyone in chambers. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in the Zoom room?
For any member of the public which should provide comment on proposal number 2023-129, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And we have one hand, last name, Annie Markle.
Hello, yes, this is Yolanda Markle, and I'm from Frederickson. And I've known Dean because we've been on committees together for Pierce County now. I've known him for about seven years, and he is an amazing asset to our community. Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Ms. Markle. Anyone else? Mr. Winesbury?
No other hands at this time, sir.
Seeing no other hands, we'll bring it back to council and close the public hearing. Are there final remarks by councilmembers? Councilmember Krueger.
Thank you, Chair Mello. I just want to say, Mr. Absher, thank you so much for stepping up once again. You are my Energizer Bunny. I can always count on you, and I was disappointed when you left the state because you were such an asset there. But I tell you, it's such a treat to have you in the district and being able to serve on these commissions. Your knowledge is impeccable. Your history, you know it, and it is such an asset that we have. And thank you again. Appreciate you more than you know. Thank you, Chair Mello.
Thank you, Councilmember Krueger. Not seeing any other hands. I, too, want to recognize your longtime service to Pierce County, Mr. Absher, and particularly to the Frederickson community. Thank you for giving us more of your time and longtime experience with the region. So we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on proposal R. 2023-129? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on proposal R 2023-129?
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Crowver.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to resolution 2023-131. Councilmember Hitchens for a motion.
Chair, I move resolution R 2023-131.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2023-131. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title to the record?
Proposal number R 2023-131, a resolution of the Pierce County Council confirming the appointment of one new member, Ursula Scott, to the Ethics Commission.
Thank you. Ursula, thank you for being with us as well. Thank you for your willingness to serve. We'd invite you to introduce yourself briefly and also share why you wish to serve.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Oh, okay, thank you. Well, I retired as a school counselor. Ethics in a lot of different ways was always an important part of my job. I served for about seven years as a CASA previously after my retirement, and I just would like to continue serving the county and the people of the county. And as I was looking for a meaningful way to do that, I found out that a member, another member, was needed on the Ethics Committee. And so I applied for that position because I thought I might be a good fit for it.
Well, thank you, Ursula. Thank you for your willingness to serve and raising your hand to do so. Are there any questions for Ursula before we open this up for a public hearing? I'm not seeing any. We'll open this up for a public hearing on resolution 2023-131. Anyone in council chambers wishing to provide comment? I'm not seeing any. Mr. Weinsberg, anybody in our Zoom room?
For any member of the public wishing to provide comment on proposal number 2023-131, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. I see no hands at this time, Chair.
Seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by councilmembers? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ursula, for stepping up. I really enjoyed reading your application and learning a little bit about you, and you seem to have a lot of just passion for making sure things are going the way they're supposed to, which, when you're talking about an Ethics Commission, I think that's exactly who we want on there. So I appreciate you stepping up for District Six. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Ursula. We, this is a very important commission, and ethics and transparency in government's a very important value of Pierce County. So thank you for bringing your service. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on resolution 2023-131?
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Crowver.
Aye.
Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to proposal R 2023-132. Now, ask Vice Chair Campbell for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move approval of R 2023-132.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt proposal R 2023-132. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title to the record?
Proposal number R 2023-132, excuse me, a resolution of the Pierce County Council confirming the appointment of one new member, Christian Isaac, to the Sheriff's Civil Service Commission.
Thank you. Christian is here with us. Christian, we'll invite you to the podium. Thank you for your willingness to serve on the Sheriff's Civil Service Commission. You can make the, there's a button to make the podium go taller if you want to. There you go. You're a quick learner. We'd invite you to introduce yourself briefly and share why you wish to serve.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Council, for having me here today. Really, as a former specially commissioned peace officer here in Pierce County and a current HR professional in talent acquisition, I find that this is an opportunity for me to use my skills, my knowledge, my abilities to serve this county. And so really, that's what I'm looking forward to doing here.
We're fortunate to have you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Isaac before we open this up for a public hearing? Vice Chair Campbell.
Mr. Isaac, didn't I appoint you to a similar position when I was at City of Tacoma?
Yes, sir, you did.
What was that, the?
That was Assistant Police Advisor Committee.
Excellent. Good to see you here. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Don't see any other questions or comments at this time, Mr. Isaac. Thank you. We will open this up for a public hearing. There's no other members of the public in chambers. Mr. Weinsberg, is there anybody in the Zoom room on this appointment?
For any member of the public wishing to provide comment on proposal number 2023-132, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. I see no hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. I was wondering where we've seen Mr. Isaac before as well in reading his nomination from the executive. I too, like our previous nominees, were very impressed in his background, his professional background, and his current willingness to serve. So I think this is a, just a really great appointment, and thank you, thank you for your willingness to do that. Other comments by councilmembers? Vice Chair Campbell.
And I join Chair Mello, and thank you. I think at the time when we appointed you, you were one of the youngest appointees we'd had to a commission. And so, which was a little controversial at the time, appointing you to the Police Oversight Commission or whatever the official name was there. But the leadership that you brought to that commission and what you brought, I saw it, and so happily sponsoring you here because I know that your leadership is what we really need across Pierce County and look forward to seeing where it continues. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other remarks. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on resolution 2023-132?
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Crowver.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. Thank you again, Mr. Isaac, and congratulations. We now have proposal R 2023-120 before us. Councilmember Morell for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for adoption, resolution number R 2023-120.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2023-120. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title to the record?
Proposal number R 2023-120, a resolution of the Pierce County Council establishing a policy and process for the display of art in council chambers and reception areas and affirming the displays of art in council chambers and reception areas are government speech.
Thank you. Mr. Bridges to brief the council.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, the title describes the resolution by way of background. You may recall that in July 11, 2023, this council passed a similar resolution concerning the display of flags in council chambers. I mention that because the process laid out in that resolution is identical to the process laid out in this resolution. The council shall only consider requests to display art made by a member of the council. Requests to display art made by members of the public or other private groups shall not be considered. Art is to be used to create civic pride, celebrate events, commemorate historic moments, honor and remember deeds and sacrifices, or reflect the great diversity of the county, and the display of art shall be approved by the Rules and Operations Committee. There, Mr. Chair, there is an amendment.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Bridges before we introduce the amendment? I'm not seeing any. Councilmember Hitchens to move council amendment number one.
Thank you, Chair. I move council number, amendment number one to R 2023-120.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt council amendment number one. Mr. Bridges.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, so the amendment adds two subsections. The first, art should be displayed for a period of not more than three months or as approved by the Rules and Operations Committee. And the second subsection would be the, a definition of art. Art means all visual media, such as paintings, murals, photographs, sculptures, or figurines intended to be located in a fixed place. Art does not include decorations associated with seasons or holidays. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens to speak to the amendment.
Thank you, Chair. I think the, well, pretty much speaks for itself. I wanted to make sure we kind of had a clear understanding of art because everybody's art is defined a little differently. And during committee, I'd asked, would seasonal decorations count? Because that becomes complicated and should not be staying up for an extended period of time. So clarifying what went up, what was art, the time period, just kind of creates a consistent pathway for the council to allow for a variety of art to come in and out of chambers as brought to the county by the council members that are seated here and council members in the future, and then also to our shared space as people enter to do business with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about council amendment number one? Not seeing any. We'll take a voice vote on adoption of council amendment number one. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion is adopted. We now have resolution 2023-120 as amended before us. Not seeing any hands, so we're going to open this up for a public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to provide comment on resolution 2023-120 as amended? Anyone in chambers? I'm not seeing any. Mr. Weinsberg, anybody in the Zoom room?
For any member of the public wishing to provide comment on proposal number 2023-120, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. One hand, last name, name, and heard.
Mr. Chairman, county council members, what you have before you, I find disturbing in the fact that it's not reflecting the traditional flags of known organizations that represent good moral character and historic beliefs of the people. What you're putting forward is an effort of expanding what people might consider art or a group of people might consider art. I have seen this in Tacoma as it comes up with a number, number of art exhibits that took government's money and put forward in the local Tacoma area to consider art. But the people spent money on something that really was not reflecting the art or historic representation of art. Please consider the fact that art is something that is in the eyes of the beholder, and it sometimes represents far more than what is being presented to the people. I urge you to take a conservative view on putting forward art, especially in your chambers, that represents a support of something that many people do not represent. I happen to be of the Christian belief, but I also support other religious beliefs that also have ethnic groups that put forward a art that should be respected as a moral support of what people have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I see no other hands at this time, Chair.
See no further hands. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by councilmembers? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. When I first was elected, we used to walk in and I'd have to look at my face so, because that was the artwork we had, was pictures of us as council members. And I struggle just looking at Zoom and looking at myself, looking back. So I really like this idea of coming up with a way of doing art and providing art in our community, in our shared space that reflects the communities we represent. One of the ideas that I started kicking around is we've got high schools in every single one of our districts and doing like photo contests. What does your, you know, what does your community mean to you? And asking them to submit photos that we could put up and rotate in our chambers instead of our faces, but places that are done in a photographic way by students from our council districts would just be, it would add color, it would add joy, and it just would bring a little bit of variety. And I think we could use a little bit of variety. So things like that, which this would allow us to do, and it would have a process where we'd have to think through what are the impacts? Are there any unintended consequences to doing this? Is there an expense to doing something like this, which is, you know, as the fiscally responsible people that we are, we need to think about that. But I think this provides a pathway and a way to share a little joy through art and lots of different ways to do that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Other final remarks? Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the comments of Councilmember Hitchens pertaining to wanting to brighten up the walls of our corridors here, both in chamber and in the reception area. I think there again, honoring some of the history that has taken place in the areas important. With the Washington Fair kicking off this weekend, I've always appreciated going to the Hobby Hall and looking at the students' artwork and displays. And I think Councilmember Hitchens has a good point that it may be something that we could rotate through just within our school districts. But there are a lot of talented young and older folks out there who make art. And art is, as Mr. Hurd said, it is in the eye of the beholder. I agree. And, but just because I don't agree with it doesn't mean that it's not art. So, you know, I'm willing to turn the process, turn this over to a process within the council that could be fair and honest in moving art through this chamber and in our reception area. And I would hate to deny Councilmember Hitchens the opportunity to do her seasonal displays as a former teacher. Those are important, and I appreciate the reminder of the changing of seasons and events and activities going by her council office. So with that, I urge support of resolution 120. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Morell, for bringing this forward. Really do appreciate the opportunity to seek out the art that we have here. It is amazing. And I have my local, regional, national, international artists. We have that hail from the Pierce County region. Reminded, when I had my business downtown, the bar next to me was a place where Dale Chuhuli used to go when he got his start. And up along the wall were nine pieces of some of his very first art that just was up there on the wall. And you have, and other Native American artists, some of their first pieces hung on the wall of the same restaurant. And priceless pieces, and they're just in a pub downtown Tacoma. Or you go into the convention center and hanging up on the wall is some found art that someone going through the archives found, which was when they put out a call for proposals for the top of the Tacoma Dome. Andy Warhol submitted two pieces for that, Flower on the Tacoma Dome. It wasn't picked, but they had in their archives the two original submissions from Andy Warhol, which now are mounted in a prominent place in the city of Tacoma. So what other international artists do we have that we may, at a young age, put on our walls that may become very famous in the long term? And so it's that celebration of art that can become the history of who we are. But it starts with allowing ourselves to... But it starts with allowing ourselves to change the rather blah outlook that we have in this room to something that is far more colorful and thought provoking and something that shows us who we are as a community through the eyes of the artists in our community. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I appreciate our members who have thought through this and bringing this forward. You know, perhaps we can lean on the good work of the Pierce County Arts Commission to help us solicit artwork from the community, from our school districts, from many other artists and arts organizations. Lots of different ways to think about how to involve others to bring that into the public spaces here in the office of the county council. So over time, look forward to see how this can come to light and how we can use our public space as a showcase for the creativity of the people of Pierce County. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll in resolution 2023-120?
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Kruber.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to proposal R 2023-127. Councilmember Hitchens for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move for adoption, R 2023-127.
Okay. It's been properly moved and it's indicated that we adopt resolution 2023-127. Madam Clerk, will you please read the titles of the record?
Proposal number R 2023-127, a resolution of the Pierce County Council setting the date of an evening District Number Six council meeting for Wednesday, September 27, 2023, at 6:30 PM at DuPont City Council Chamber, 1700 Civic Drive, DuPont, Washington.
Thank you. Ms. Long.
Thank you. The Pierce County Charter at Section 2.30 provides that the council shall conduct at least one evening meeting in each of the seven districts each year. And the council's rules of procedure, codified at 128040, provides that the specific day, time, and place of these meetings be set by resolution. The resolution before you does just that. As the clerk stated, those details for the District Six upcoming meeting. And I'll also note that the District Six meeting will be held in addition to the regular Tuesday meeting of that week. So, thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Long before we open this up for a public hearing? Not seeing any. Any member of the public wishing to provide comment on resolution 2023-127? Anyone in chambers? Not seeing any. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in the Zoom room?
For any member of the public wishing to provide comment on proposal number 2023-127, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And we have one hand. Last name, Indian Heard.
Oh, great. Me again. All right, I'm Terry Heard, Mr. Chairman, county council members. I've attended several of your meetings when they're out in the area where I'm at. When you go out into the community, don't go, please, don't go with a pre-approved, all set up business arrangement. Go out and ask some really pertinent questions of the people in the community. The people come forward in wanting to address their council members and everybody else who is a council member that there are issues of the local community that need to be addressed and heard by the council members. Open it up as an open meeting, ask questions, encourage people to come forward with their desires for what they want, for both positive and negative. Look for the input of the local citizens in the area that are at. There are areas, when you open the meeting in a certain zone, and I'm going to say where I come from, if they're rather elaborate zone, that local issues need to be addressed and given time to address to the people, all of you. Thank you very much today.
Thank you for those comments.
And we have no other times at this time, no other hands at this time, Chair.
Seeing no further hands, we'll close the public hearing, we'll bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Though you'll have to get on I-5, so I can't always tell you what the time will be. We're not driving quite as far as some of our other council meetings, though they were both beautiful and worth the drive. DuPont will be gladly hosting us in chambers. We're working to make sure that we'll have all the technology aspects available. But the theme for the night, because it's me and I must have a theme, is transportation. So we'll be learning a little bit about what the state is thinking about as far as the Nisqually project. There's going to be pretty significant impacts to both JBLM, I-5 corridor, DuPont, as we think about how we deal with sea level rise and the, basically the failure eventually of that I-5 corridor. We need to do something and be proactive, so we'll be hearing about that. We'll get an update on what is going to be happening, where the BRT was supposed to be going, and that interim plan, and then what's going forth from there, along with, of course, my favorite topic, the ferry will be presenting a little bit of information. And the funding for the ferry study was released yesterday, all 129 pages of it. So I'll get the Cliff Notes version for everybody and we'll have a presentation on what that's looking like. So, and then just a little bit about DuPont, so it should be a good meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for planning that, Councilmember Hitchens. Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You had me until you said ferry. I just want to make sure that there again, there is an electric charging station for a council member. Campbell.
I will check.
And I was going to join Councilmember Herrera in a canoe ride down the Sound and Over, but I don't think we can get that closed. And of course, a hitching post for Councilmember Kruber is very important. And so we just want to make sure that you accommodate our transportation needs and look forward to meeting in DuPont.
Thank you, Councilmember Morell, for taking the transportation theme so seriously and free planning everyone's transportation options there. Councilmember Hitchens.
I actually believe there might be a hitching post somewhere down there in the historic parts of DuPont. I know that the Buffalo Soldiers have a, like a station that they use there and they perform in that community regularly. Scared me quite heavily the first time I heard the whip go. And I was not prepared for the horses nor the whip. They just came out of nowhere during the farmer's market. And suddenly they were running across the farmer's market. So there could be. I will look. And let me know if we actually need an electric charging station. I feel like there's one there, but I don't know where. Thank you, Chair. And Councilmember Morell.
Thank you. The vote is on proposal R 2023-127. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Kruber.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That's all of our business for today. We now turn to Section 10, Community Forum. Community Forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any topic that did not appear on today's agenda. There is a three-minute time limit. We ask you to state your name if you would like it on the record and address all comments of the chair. And I'll start with those in chambers. I don't think we have anyone in chambers wishing to provide comment on their community forum. So we'll turn to our Zoom operator for remote comments. Mr. Winesbury.
For any member of the public wishing to provide public comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And at this time, we have two hands raised at this time, Chair. Last name, Indian O, first.
Hi, my name is Russell. My last name's Okert. I live out in Spanaway in a community. And I'm new at this, by the way. This is my first time seeing you guys. I appreciate all the work you do. I just found out my council person is Amy, so I appreciate her doing all the work out there. So I was trying to make our community safer. I'm part of the HOA out there. And I wanted to know how I can go about putting a gate. So the county owns the road, but we're willing to take over the rights of the road and maintain it and everything else like that. So how would I go from presenting this to you guys and getting approval? Because I was told by the offices I would have to go through you guys. Is that true? Or, and if I'm in the wrong for speaking like this, I'm sorry. So you just let me know, okay?
You're doing fine.
So I just, I would like to know how we can get a gate in there. We have a, I've been chasing out homeless. I've been chasing out. I found needles in the park when I chase them out. I mean, my kids go out there and play and other kids and stuff go out there. And I would hate to see them get stabbed by people not doing the right thing in life. And I was told we're not allowed to put a gate because you guys own, or the public owns the property on the road there. So how would I go about this?
Thank you, Russell. We'll do our best to address your comments at the very end of Community Forum after everyone's had their opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have last name, Indian Heard.
Mr. Chairman, county council members, I'm addressing several things today. You talked about the sad side of contacticide or what's called suicide. I was involved with the National Guard for many years as a full-time employee. And I'll tell you that I had a fellow, had a coworker who had a wife, had many years, and had kids, and the drugs changed. And then all of a sudden, her ability to address the relationship changed. And it reached the point where it degraded to the point where she went to get help from the state. The state stepped in, changed her medications again. And it became, the relationship between the two, really bad. To make a long story short, they ended up in a divorce that the state and her blamed him for her mental condition. So when I listened to the people that were talked about in the first in this meeting today, I felt very compelled to say that the drugs that these people take have side effects that need to be addressed and looked at beyond just an individual looking at it. It was sad. They develop a divorce and it goes. I also lost troops from the inability to talk due to the stigma that goes along with taking drugs and trying to work with the organizations that are around there. And secondly, the council, if your words represented the community's needs and reflected in your resolutions, it would support citizen's support greatly. As one of those who was along, involved with the Frederickson Clover Creek Community Council and the Frederickson Land use Advisor Commission, I fought with the organizations and the parties that you represent. It was sad that the truth was not honored, respected, and encouraged. You all have your program and it's not what the people were asking you to do. So of course, when I came up for being involved with the council again, I was not allowed. Last thing I want to talk about, and this is totally different, is the fisheries conflict. We who live in Pierce County have a P'Alaf River and it has a lot of fish that go up and down the river, usually up on the salmon especially. And I would like to say that please make an effort to open up the river for non-conflicting fishing. When the Indians go by and hold up the salmon in their hands and say, "If you want to buy salmon, you just come to this place." Don't allow strip netting fishing of the river when salmon people are on the banks trying to salmon fish. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there are no other hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. We'll close the public, the Community Forum portion of our meeting. We appreciate both public commenters for giving us feedback and questions. Russell, we heard your question about a potential street vacation and helping to maintain a public right of way, so we heard that. I think it's, you know, probably best to understand your particular situation. And so we'll make sure we get your contact information or feel free to contact your council member, Councilmember Kruber. She and her office certainly know how to navigate county government to get you the answer that you need with the help of our council staff. So Russell, again, will rely on you to follow up with Councilmember Kruber and she'll help you navigate county operations here and facilitate a path forward. Councilmember Kruber acknowledged that she received your email and I'm certain her office, if she hasn't already, will be in follow-up to help guide you to get some direction. We're at other business and announcements. Are there any other business or announcements by council members? I would just like to remind everyone that in honor of the Labor Day holiday, all council meetings are canceled for Monday, September 4. Most county offices and services will be closed on Monday, September 4, and on a holiday schedule for essential services. County offices will be open on Tuesday, September 5, and will resume normal operations. The county council will resume our normal operations on Tuesday with committee meetings in the morning, our study session at noon, including a joint study session with the Port of Tacoma Commission, and our regular business meeting at 3 PM on Tuesday. We wish everyone a very happy Labor Day and a safe one. Ms. Long, is there any other, excuse me, Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I just had one other announcement. This Labor Day weekend, September 1 through the 3, is the 44th Annual P'Alaf Tribal Powwow. It's going to be a Chief Leshai. Friday, the first grand entry is at 7 PM. And if you've never been to one of these Powwows, they're pretty great. And everybody from the community is always invited. There's good food there. You'll see tribes from all over the place, not just the P'Alaf tribes, showcasing their heritage and, you know, all this stuff. So it's a really good stuff. On Saturday, between 5 and 7, they're going to have a salmon bake. And it's good, so just want to let people know. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that invitation, Councilmember Herrera. Councilmember Kruber.
Thank you, Chair Mello, and I appreciate the reminder of events this weekend because my goodness, it's the Roy Rodeo, Saturday and Sunday. It usually starts noon or 1 on both days, and it's a lot of fun. There's popcorn, there's burgers, there's cowboys and cowgirls and milking cows. You've got to be careful because you can get hurt, you know, when you're out there trying to catch a cow in a milk contest. But it's really phenomenal and fun to watch. So I would encourage anyone to go if you have the time. Appreciate that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Kruber. I grew up on a cattle ranch and I got hurt branding cattle, not milking cattle. That's when you really get hurt. Thank you for that, Councilmember Kruber. Any other announcements by council members? Ms. Long, any other business for council this evening? Seeing no other business before the Pierce County Council, we are adjourned.